Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin our city council meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So please join me as we reflect on tonight and our council and what's happening. Gracious Father, we just thank you for this opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Saginaw. We ask you to be with each and every one of those, be with the city as we end up this year and look forward to the new year. Be with all our city workers, our public safety workers and everyone. Keep them safe and we ask this in your name. Amen. At this time, I'd like to introduce for the Pledge of Allegiance, I have that. Jared Janowitz. He is an intern with the City Clerk's Office from Delta College and he'll be interning and sitting with our clerk tonight. So I've asked Jared to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Jared. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Fitzpatrick. Councilman Tibbs. Councilwoman Bench. Mayor Potem O'Neill is excused. Councilman Klorus. Councilwoman Moore. Councilman Balls. Councilman Clark. Mayor Browning. We have eight members present and one excused.
I think we're at...
Did you want to go over audience rules?
Yes, I would like to go over the audience rules.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Just remind the audience, please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, cheering, or any other behavior that would interrupt our council meeting. Also, it's a good time to silence your cell phones, please. I know that mine was not up until just now, so please, please do that. It's a good thing you reminded me to do that. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. For announcements this evening, I do have one. I'd like everyone to be reminded that City Hall will be closed this Thursday and Friday, December 24th and 25th, for the Christmas holiday. And also closed Friday, January 1st of 2016 for the New Year's Day holiday. And with that, Mayor, we are now at personal appearances.
Okay, and we do have one tonight, is that correct?
Yes, you do.
So let me quickly go through this personal appearance as the speaker is limited to three minutes. The purpose of the personal appearance is to address council. Speaker shall address their remarks to council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speaker shall not ask questions of specific council members. With that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have Pastor Larry Camel listed this evening. Do not see him present.
I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
We will go on to remarks of council.
Okay, remind council members, you are limited to five minutes. And tonight, we are going to start with Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just want to take the opportunity to thank AT&amp;T, who made a very generous contribution last week to the city. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. They made a very generous contribution to our neighborhood groups via the city last week and we just want to thank them for recognizing how valuable our Neighborhood Association efforts are. And I also wanted to mention that "Major Chords for Minors" was featured on NPR on December 15th in a story by Pam Fessler. It was entitled "Free Music Lessons: Strike a Chord for at-Risk Kids." And so I just wanted to point that out and make sure everybody had an opportunity to listen to it. So, in fact, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy holidays to everyone as well. And thank you for taking the time to be present today. I just had one brief comment about one of the organizations that I participate in in the city is called Reed of Saginaw County. And basically what that organization does, it reads, or you visit a school, an elementary school within the city for about 30 minutes a week. And you either read to or the student read to you for 30 minutes. Or actually, it's 15 minutes and you get two kids, two students for a 15-minute block. And I participate at Stone Elementary and I have a great student who's always a delight to spend time with. Last week when I was present, there was a new participant there and I recognized him as one of our firefighters. And I just want to thank the Fire Department for, I don't know if he was there in representation of the Fire Department, I just know he was a fireman within the city. And I just wanted to thank him for participating in such an important group within our city. And that just led me to believe about our Fire Department in general and how at some point, it appears that if not a choice has, a decision has already been made but will be made next year sometime. And earlier this year, I attended a countywide meeting that appeared to be facilitated by some of our county representatives. And part of the agenda was discussion about service consolidation. And Police Department and Fire Department was a part of that agenda. And I guess I was just curious to know if at some point, maybe, and I'm just thinking out loud, if those meetings will continue to happen and if that was a legitimate possibility of consolidating services to avoid the possibility of what could occur next year sometime. And it just helps off the city in twofold. One, it prevents just another vacant building possibly within our city. And also, the Fire Department has such an active role in our cities in general. And I just think we should do what we can to avoid what could possibly happen later next year. And as a council member, I'm just presenting ideas and just something I came across. In California, they were looking at consolidating services and what they did was they opened their first fire health department. And what they found in the study was that many of the calls that the Fire Department was receiving dealt with health emergencies. And so what they did was they consolidated the two services and not necessarily providing full medical care, but they combined the two entities, the Fire Department as well as providing just base health services to members in the community. And somehow, I guess, I hate to use that term, but Obamacare was funding this, to an extent, that part of the health services that were provided. And it was called the Firehouse Clinic. And so, you know, it's just an idea that I came across and I thought I would share. I would like to see, to do all we can to help our Fire Department. They're such an active members in our community. And I just thought I would share that. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome everybody and Merry Christmas to all. And I want to mention a group that doesn't get, or a department that doesn't get a whole lot of mention. They get whole lots of questions and they get a whole lot of time where they got to get up and give explanations. But Phil Carwatt, your Street Department, Streets, I'm really happy that the Mackinac Street Project is completed. It was a big deal, a big job, replacing, replacing the infrastructure and as well as on the street that was in really rough shape. But I'm really happy and I know the residents are really happy with the results. So kudos to you and your department for what you're doing. I would also like to remind everybody that coming up, hopefully, we'll have some decent weather to, by that I mean winter-type weather, snow, cold enough to keep the snow on the ground so that places like Hoyt Park can be used for sledding and also for ice skating. And we're looking forward to, friends of Hoyt Park are looking forward to another successful year, I think our third, fourth year of wintertime activities down there. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and best wishes for a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe holiday season. I do want to also thank the AT&amp;T for the donation mentioned by Councilman Bench that was made on Friday for the Neighborhood Associations that will help them in doing their work in support of the city. It was very well appreciated. I also want to mention how well the Saginaw-based Symphony Orchestra Christmas Concert was attended on the 8th of December. It was a lot of fun, a wonderful concert. And always encourage those who may not have yet been to the concerts to attend. I mentioned the holiday season. There's probably a few days, well, there is a few days left until Christmas and probably some of you like me have not completed all your shopping. So if not, I want to remind everyone to buy Saginaw. This is your town. We support it. Those people who are willing to operate businesses in the city need your support. Please don't forget them. Please remember to talk about those to your friends and neighbors as well if they are still doing some last-minute shopping or attending restaurants or what have you. Something that's going to be, sound like it's off the wall, but as a city, we don't have a forestry department anymore. We'd like to have one, but the tax gap prevents it. Well, what that means is we have a lot of trees that are probably not trimmed as often or as well as they should be. Some of you may have noticed trees overhanging, the sidewalks, trees overhanging or in the way of signs, even obstructing streetlights. Well, you can help. There's no reason some people in there, your property, can't do some trimming. When is the time to do it? So think about your city. Think about how you can help improve it. If it's something that's within your capabilities, do it. Go out, do some trimming. It'll help you and it'll help us. I do want to also recognize positive results in downtown, the former Pride, and the Downtown Saginaw Association, and the downtown businesses, especially absolute building maintenance, for their efforts to restart the downtown Christmas lighting tradition. If anyone's been down there recently, you'll see there's three lights, or three trees that have been lighted next to the Temple Theater in Morley Plaza, which we haven't had for a number of years. Looks very nice. Compared to decades ago, it's a modest start, of course, but it's a start. Those businesses downtown want to put the best foot forward for both you and those who would come to visit us. So they are to be complimented and I look forward to larger displays in the years to come as more downtown businesses get involved. I also want to say the same congratulations to the Old Town businesses and association members. They've been growing their Christmas display for some years and it's a great contribution to our city as well. So what is being done by these local businesspeople is to be remembered and thanked. With that, I think that's all I have to say and again, happy holidays.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't have too much to say today, but I am happy that Congressman Dale Kilde has been seeking new federal grants to help out cities with demolition and to improve our cities. If I'm not mistaken, he just got approved for $2 billion to help out. So hopefully, some of those funds will be coming to Saginaw, Michigan, to help us to eliminate blight and to make our community more safer and beautiful for all our citizens. It's always good to see those, our tax dollars coming back to the city of Saginaw to help us out here. I had the opportunity to, you know I'm a big advocate of the Big Brothers and Sisters program. And yes, I am. And only because I know that when I do that, that it makes our society a much better place when we have some mentors. And as a board member of that organization, too, we had the opportunity to get a grant from Wayne State University for over $50,000. But only thing is, we need some more mentors. And we only asking people to be involved for at least a year to help out a teenager that's 16, 17-years-old and to help mentor them. They're going to send them, take them to some college trips and a lot of things to help them out. We need to seek them to have some employment for those adults, but most of all, we need mentors. So I'm asking the community again to please get involved in Big Brothers and Sisters program. If anybody interested, you can always contact me or call the Big Brothers office at 755-6558. We'd be more than happy to help you, help our community. Because a lot of kids out here, they're not bad kids, they just don't know, they don't have anything else to do. So some of them have a tendency to hang around with other people who's not doing good things. And association, I believe, brings about assimilation. If you hang around people that's doing good things, more likely, you're going to do good things. That's one of the reasons why I got on the city council, so I can, yeah, do good things and help assimilate you guys. But, you know, it's always good to do something good in the community, man. Whenever you can help out a young adult, I tell you, man, it helps out the Fire Department and the Police Department when we got kids that's doing the right things in our community. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and please be safe. I want to do some shout-outs to Tom Miller, Jr., and his association to the firefighters. We have some families who needed Christmas and these individuals are making sure that they have a decent Christmas this year. And so I'd just like to thank them from the bottom of my heart. I've been in a lot of meetings this week. A lot of them have just been meetings where we were informing people of what's going on in the city. Saginaw is booming in more ways than one. I was in a meeting down in Flint with some of the other council members and they were talking about their city and so you know I did a shout-out for Saginaw. And I told them how our crime rate had went down. And so they was trying to compare Flint to Saginaw. I said, "You can't, you can't, apples and oranges. We hands down, we safer now." So that was a good thing. On last Wednesday, I represented the city with Michigan Municipal League. I sat on a panel and I did for new members. And so I'm encouraging all of us to sit at this table, to take part in MML, which is Municipal League. You need to go to those workshops to get their credits. In March, I will be graduating in two stanzas. And they were shocked because I did it all in two years. They said it normally takes three years. But with dedication, the things that I've learned going to MML, it's just incredible. They are coming into the city, they're looking, they're trying to help us do some things. And so I'm encouraging my fellow council persons to try to get involved with MML whenever you can. Thanks so much. And once again, everybody have a safe and blessed holiday.
Welcome, Klorus.
Thank you. First of all, it is the Christmas season and to all these council people, Merry Christmas. I'm available. If there are any gifts that you expect to pass out, I'll leave about 12 hours in my schedule so you can stop by. I mean it. Anyway, I want to do something kind of corny. I want to give special thanks to the staff and the employees at Christmas time. And more important, the department heads. The amazing thing about the departments is that they've been working over and above their normal schedules. And by that, I don't mean that they're working overtime. It's the spirit of the thing. It's what they put into it. What they've established was synergy. And this is a very, very powerful thing. It's a very powerful thing because the people that don't apply that wind up being like the old fiefdom where they're going to do their own little thing and forget what anybody else is doing. Our staff is beyond that. And it shows. And guys and girls keep it going because that's what makes this a city. That's what makes it a great city. Very proud of being this involved with it. And I'd be wrong in not thanking our city manager for all the intensity he's put into this job. And he's been part and parcel of the synergy. And I certainly hope that we continue it. Again, I'm available for about 12 hours. I'll leave my number in case the time runs out. Leave it in the back door. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Number of items that I would like to just cover here as we wrap it up a little bit here. Also, very heartfelt thanks to AT&amp;T for their continued support in the city of Saginaw, not only throughout the whole year, but even the special donations they did for us. I did have a chance to attend the Saginaw Police Reserves banquet at the end of the year. Well over 2,000 hours of volunteerism here in the city of Saginaw at many of the special events and other activities going on. So what a wonderful organization that that is to help with us. Today, at Ask the Mayor segment, I did talk about the new LED lighting. If you haven't noticed, drive downtown and because they were doing the decorating of the light poles, it also gave them an opportunity to reinstall the new LED lights. And you'll see a much improvement down there and also, I believe, on some of the west side there. And then, of course, that really kicks into full gear in February as the whole city will be transferred over to the new LED light system. And we're really excited about that. And that is a huge reduction in bills for us when it comes to the lighting, just huge. And so we're excited about that. Residents, you will start to see it in your neighborhoods sometime in February is when we're going to ramp that up and be able to do that there. I agree with the comments downtown with the Pride starting to light up Morley Plaza. They really need our help, though, as citizens. They need our help to do that. There's a lot of trees down there. And if you, next year, business, community, neighborhood association, doesn't matter, if you would like to maybe, I'd recommend sponsor one of those trees or something for them. That'd be a nice opportunity, especially during the holidays. It's such a great time down there. Councilman Klorus, it is better to give than to receive. So if, I'm still open to the fact that my Christmas, I might get that special coney sauce recipe that you refuse to give out to anyone. So we'll be requesting Santa to take a look at that for me to see if we could get that. We just went from that to Scrooge, so.
Everybody has to have one.
You got it. Thank you. So with that, for those that are celebrating the holidays, happy holidays. If you're celebrating Christmas, Merry Christmas to you. And of course, Happy New Year to each and every one of you. With that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports for manager.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate our police chief Ruth. Who was awarded the Jill Gallagher Outstanding Alumni Award for Professional and Scholarly Accomplishment from Delta College Police Academy. And he received that award on Friday. It was developed in 2005 to showcase an academy graduate who has been a leader in the law enforcement community. It recognizes professional and scholarly achievement and is presented to a person who has demonstrated a high level of commitment to the welfare of the entire community served by Delta College. Jill Gallagher retired after 25 years of dedicated service to Delta College in 2006 and played an integral part in the success of the academy. Congratulations to Chief Ruth for that.
Also, in the police department, and I know a few council members had mentioned this before in something we'd been talking about doing and putting in place. Through the administrative employees at the police department and our tech services department, we now have police online reporting for crime. In an effort to streamline the reporting process and provide more efficient service to Saginaw residents, businesses, and our visitors, the Saginaw Police Department installed online report system. Reports are submitted via secure connection and the system allows the public to use the Internet to report lost property, theft, larceny from a vehicle, harassing phone calls, threats or stalking, vandalism, hit-and-run accidents, stolen checks, simple fraud, stolen credit cards, gas drive-offs, and simple assaults. So it should be used for not emergency reporting only, but it's available 24/7. And if further investigation of an online report is needed and they need more information, citizens would be contacted by a police officer. Additionally, similar to that, we had a changeover at the countywide level in the police technology. So we recently purchased software to display city crime stats on the city website and I believe a few of you asked for that as well. So we should have that operational in the first quarter of 2016. I forwarded to council members as well the draft report for the Place Plans project with the MML. So if you have comments on that or questions that you want to see changed, please get those back before January 11th. Final report will be part of our strategic planning session, so MML needs that back by that time to complete the report. And I have received a few questions already, so if you have any, please email those to And also, I wanted to thank Tom Miller, Sr., who spoke at our city-school-county liaison meeting last week, the land bank and what they do and how they can help around some of the schools. So I think everyone appreciated his attendance and I think they were surprised at the level of cooperation. I don't think they realized that the city and the county land bank worked that well together. So thanks to Tom for that. The audit has been completed and submitted to the state and it's a clean audit. And we will, we're planning to have that presentation right now at our first meeting in February. So we can, we'll likely get the audit to you at the next meeting. All the copies arrived today. Detailed presentation will be first meeting in February or at our strategic planning session. Right now, we're thinking the first meeting in February, so that should give you an opportunity to look it over if you have any questions for Yoan Yo, Dave Youngstrom, or another principal will be here at that time. And as Councilman Balls mentioned, the $2 billion was allocated to blight removal in the recent budget extension that was passed. And that is sponsored by a number of Michigan senators and representatives. Senator Peters and Stabenow worked very hard on that, as well as Congressman Kilde, Congresswoman Candace Miller, Congressman Conyers, and Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence. The last round of funding, I believe, was a billion dollars. The last round of funding, I believe, was a billion dollars, and the state of Michigan received half a billion dollars from that. So it's not any guarantees in there that we're going to get funding through that, but Michigan has done very well with that in the past, so we believe that something will result from that new allocation. And then finally, I'd like to thank AT&amp;T as well for the donation that the city received Friday. And it was fairly quick, and we caught them at the end of their funding period. Debbie Powell in my office was working with the neighborhood associations for donations for Light Up the City and Arson Watch, and AT&amp;T doesn't donate to specific initiatives like that. So it's a good opportunity for us, and then they donated to the neighborhood programs as a whole. So that donation goes to the community foundation, and the neighborhood associations that work with them on several initiatives will be able to designate where they want to spend that money. So the AT&amp;T has been becoming very involved in the Downtown Saginaw Association and the Downtown Neighborhood Association. A number of their employees use the Riverwalk, so I think we'll continue to work with them. And as you know, a few years ago, they added a couple hundred employees down there and worked with the city on a couple of new initiatives. So we'll continue to call them now that we have a better idea of what their funding period is, and we know that they're very interested in working on initiatives downtown. And that concludes management report for this evening.
Is there any questions to the manager reference his report?
Yes. Yeah, this is a little irregular, I understand, but I do notice that Pastor Camel came in, and I know he wanted to speak on the police department, and he wanted to congratulate the police department. I was wondering whether the manager could call him and have him speak for Mike.
Council has the right to waive the rules and go back to that if you so choose. That would be a council decision, not on the manager. But that would be, you have the prerogative after we moved to waive the rules if you so choose. But that's, okay? Yep, if that's appropriate answer for that. Any other one for the manager? Any other questions for the manager? Being none? Okay. Councilman Fitzpatrick, before we move on?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the rules in order to allow Pastor Camel to speak, since he came in a little late and he missed his opportunity.
Any discussion? It's been moved and supported. The only concern I have is you are now setting precedence that if anyone at any other meeting would be late. You're now, I'm just letting you know that, council members. He's wonderful. You're setting what you want to do. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, have we done this before?
I'm sure that it probably has been done before, but I can't tell you when or where. So I'm just letting you know, that's all. I don't know that. I don't have that, and our clerk does not know any either. Councilman Floyd Clark?
Just to comment, I think it's always a concern whether or not we should do something like this. Well, I understand it. On the other hand, it may be a timing matter. There's no reason we couldn't perhaps do it at the end, at the time for the additional comments miscellaneous. That would be a more appropriate time. So perhaps, Councilman Fitzpatrick, you want to amend your motion to reflect that, and I would be more willing to support that, I think, because it would be an appropriate time for something like that. You can support him now?
That would be fine. Yes, to amend it, to have that happen at the end of the meeting, in the time for...
We can just go in and pick it up?
Right.
Mayor, you can motion to amend. How would we do? Why?
We have motion to amend. It's been supported. We vote on the amendment, right? First? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend then passes. Does that then negate the first motion, right?
No, the motion will be put on the floor as amended.
Okay, now the motion is on the floor as amended. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzpatrick, thank you for bringing that up.
We are now at Consent Agenda.
And I'm to announce that the Consent Agenda has been available at City Hall on the Saginaw City's website and SGTV Channel 191. With that, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at Reports from Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and Appointment of Board and Commission Members.
Are there any reports from any boards that council members would like to share? Being none, do we have any appointments tonight?
We do have one on the agenda. It is a council reappointment of Susannah Chaltraw to the Human Planning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2017.
Motion to reappoint?
Move.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have one this evening. It's authorizing obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 3430 State Street.
I need a motion to adopt.
Why?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any questions on the motion? Any questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We are now at Orders and Consent Agenda.
Okay.
Do you ask the Speaker of the Department of Public?
Yes.
To allow the Speaker of Pastor Larry Camel.
Mr. Camel?
Good evening, council. To the mayor and the city manager and to all the council persons tonight, I ask you to forgive me for my tardiness, but this was a very important issue that I wanted to come before the council and to let you know the great police work that the Saginaw Police Department has given to our organization. On December 6, a Sunday night, about 10 o'clock, I received a call from the chief that the burglar alarm at 2316 Weber had went off. Police were there. They had surrounded our outreach, and they had apprehended two young men that were inside the building. They had great police work. When I got there, they had apprehended them, and the articles that they attempted to steal, the police department had already recovered them. So I thought it was fitting that I come and to recommend the great police work that was done by these officers December 6. About 10 o'clock at night, I got a personal call from the chief, and I did get there. And when I got there, everything was all secured. They had already called Saginaw Public Schools. They were en route to fix the window that was broken, and so it made my job real easy. And these two young individuals are in the police, in the juvenile home today. So I wanted to recommend that great police work that they have done for prisoners on patrol in our community. So I wanted to come tonight to let all of you know I appreciate the work that the Saginaw Police Department has done in reference to prisoners on patrol in securing our building in our community.
Council members, anything else on their miscellaneous or new business? Councilman Balls?
It might be a great opportunity to mentor them guys right now. You know, out of all seriousness, you know, maybe you can pull them in.
It's maybe a long time for... It brought my attention the other day from people who utilize the section of the city from Michigan Avenue to the Johnson Street Bridge. If you recall, that was the old doil, doil freight. That piece of land around there is a disaster, and this is without any miscellaneous paper flowing around. I think it's unfair and improper that when we're trying to create the image of the city, here is a artery that comes in on State Street from all over to get to the Temple Theater or the Event Center. I know you're busy, Phil, but it is Christmas. I don't have an answer for it, but it's pretty bad, and this is a bad time of the year for it. But I think it's something we should think about in an overall picture. I don't have any suggestions, but it is a mess. And when you think of people coming from all over into our city, and they've got to drive past that, that's pretty bad. That's about it.
I do think Councilman Balls has made a good note about these issues for the public. But actually, my miscellaneous comment is, Councilman Klorus has 12 hours. I think it's more than enough time to make some hot dogs and some great coney sauce for us council members to enjoy. I would so move if he would second.
You can have a second all you want. Well, that's even better. Now you have first and second.
I saw you don't want to rush them. You do have a Saturday session coming up.
That's right.
In which that Saturday session could be coney dogs and sauce. 12 hours together without a coney dog would be tough.
Who's going to help?
We'll all help.
Well, I'll come over and help you make sauce. The, okay, is there any, I have one last comment I wouldn't wait. Pastor Campbell in the back, it's hard to believe that they would break into prisoners on patrol. But rest assured, they broke into my Crime Stopper's car years ago, and it said Crime Stoppers right on the side, and they just broke in and stole my binoculars. So who knows what happens over the years? Councilmen, councilwomen, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.